Welcome to the study session of the Littleton Planning Commission for June 26, 2019. We don't need the roll call. Just want to go over a few things. One is maybe we can go around the table here. I'd like to get people's impression of last night. What were the good points? What were the bad points? Some of those gave some. It's not just last night, but I'd like to do it again for those that didn't make it. So, and then we're going to look at this lovely little skeletal outline that Bruce and I and now Robin have been asking for for many, many months, and now we have it. And then we'll dive right into what they call page two of the questions that we went over last time. We got last time, we had a study session with Kenyon Keast. We got through page one and part of page two. Now we're going to get further into page two. So, impressions of last night. Let's go around the table.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was very helpful for me and for us in a couple of ways. One is I think the format of breaking out into separate tables was give everybody an opportunity to contribute, whereas with a larger group like this, it was a little bit harder to get some ideas in. So, and then the reporting out, I think, gave a good summary of what each table identified. But for those that weren't there, the tables were transportation land use. There are four different tables focused on different areas. I was kind of pleasantly surprised, I think, from the folks at my table, having sort of diverse backgrounds and interests. We kind of had similar thoughts on things. So, we were kind of speaking the same language about a few visions for the future of Littleton. So, I came away feeling good about the process.
I had meeting confusion last night, so I did not come because I thought it was tonight. And so, anyway, whatever. Sorry I missed.
This is the report out from each of the tables. So, we can appear on the floor.
Everything you needed to know.
Except for the please do not erase. We didn't hear that.
All right. I took that down already.
I thought it was really, it was like a workshop. And everyone being able to be at their tables in smaller, more intimate groups had a chance to talk. So, you had a lot more people who, you know, when you're in a big meeting like that, you know, you have to really prioritize what you're going to talk about because when there's that many people, the time is different. But in this case, everyone had the chance to fully express what they were thinking. And going between the four different tables, each of them having their own topic helped you to focus on those topics. I think that was extraordinarily productive. I really appreciated like Meredith gave her summary, how you talked about the diversity of ideas. And you also did that too, Gary. I was a little disappointed in the transportation side because the ideas that the table I was in were not expressed. And they said generally, and then they gave a lump sum of things, but what we actually talked about at my table were not hard. So, that's why I really appreciate what Meredith did because you gave the gamut and they did not. So, it seemed like that there was more consensus than I think there actually was on those two tables. But it was extremely productive. The workshop format worked really well, I thought, to move things forward.
I too thought it was very productive, and I was pushing for that type of format because the, what the citizens, what do they call it, the CCC Citizens Group, we did that a month and a half ago. And it was extreme. That was right after we met with council. And that CCC meeting was a lot more productive than council because we broke up into those small groups. I liked Debbie Brinkman's comment about the diversity of comment, also the positive aspects of it. You know, we get hammered a lot for, you know, the wrongs, the ills. But keeping in mind that Littleton is a fantastic place to live. And last night was kind of a positive. This is, these are good things. How do we plan for the future? Well done. We also talked about, one of the tables was the future land use map. That was a spirited conversation. What was really spirited was the ADU conversation. It was all over the place from shut her down to build, baby, build, and everything in between. That was very interesting. And I think probably every table mirrored Littleton's attitude, again, all over the place. So, quite productive.
I was out of town on the East Coast, so I had to send regrets. I do regret missing it. I would have enjoyed it. It sounds like it was an excellent session.
You can attempt to watch it. Just fast forward to the end.
Yeah, the end is there.
See what I can do about that.
Yeah, that's what I did is I ended up watching it. And kind of as you said, it was kind of hard to follow what was going on. But I think it's our time 2:50, 2:50-ish, and that's when you can start hearing the table summaries.
Okay.
So, that was, I just jotted down much of the notes and things that we heard, that I heard looked like it was a productive work session.
Excellent. Sweet.
We didn't see your handsome face. Okay. Yeah, next part of the, part of little packet which is everybody's table is this skeletal outline. You might want to take a peek at this. It's something that Bruce and I talked about quite a while ago.
Yeah.
And we were talking about it, Robin and I. So, it's just kind of an outline of perhaps how this comprehensive plan is going to be organized. And so, as we look at little pieces, parts with Kenyon Keast over the next few months, we can compare it to this list and see how it would fit in. That's the worth of this skeletal outline. So, thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. So, I'll turn it over to you as far as the topics of the evening. And let's get the ball rolling.
All right. You want to take, we went, worked through the first page last time. So, top of the second page was the urban category. So, the first point there is just that idea that typically, especially in suburban areas, you think of setbacks as a minimum, that you're trying to get some minimal setback to have a front yard or side separation between homes in an urban character area, downtown area, if it's not already that way, buildings close to the street, storefronts. The idea in some urban areas is to require that buildings be at or close. Sometimes it's a five-foot setback. And even you can have standards that say, kind of want to vary the fronts to where there might be, especially where there's narrow sidewalks, not deep sidewalks. So, you have some area out front for sidewalk seating, outdoor dining, whatever, planters. So, some town, the main street downtown in Littleton is very much that uniform building front along the sidewalk. But some downtown, you'll see more of that variation. But in general, the idea is keep the buildings close to the street. So, maximum setback. So, that's all there is to that first point. The other not-so-secret agenda there is to not have parking in the front. That's another piece of it. Just by having things up to the street, you're really requiring parking to be on the side or typically at the back. So, that's all there is to that first one. So, I wasn't sure, there's that item about does that provide cohesive look? So, I didn't know where that might have come from or what we need to address there.
And is that, actually, so the, it's the bill two, right?
Yeah.
Or you're sort of doing bill two. And is that, is that specifically just for the downtown core? Or is it for any sort of future land use that has that sort of urban tag to it?
That, that will be what feeds into the zoning process and discussion is, and even one of the topics that came up last night was to even think about Main Street as its own subarea within the overall downtown area, that that's where you really have the true buildings to the street. And then you've got a mix, you know, once you get away from Main Street. Some things are right up at the street, others are set back. And so, that'll be the policy decision along with parking standards. You know, this downtown has been here a long time. It's built the way it is, but it is transitioning. So, that's often a zoning policy decision is do you set a bar at some point and say, from this point forward, we're going to go a different direction as far as, and let me, I should go ahead and talk about the next one because they really tie in. Where you can put surface parking in an urban, quote, downtown area. We have definitely done zoning ordinances where everything is to be in the back. Now, that has to fit, again, the design history and the evolution of that area. Another, kind of an intermediate step is you might have places where parking is on the side, and you see that in downtown Littleton. The issue there is always, is it a downtown where you want that continuous wall of buildings, no breaks? And in some downtown, in some communities, they don't want those breaks. They want the continuous storefront, don't want to see cars. It's all about pedestrian atmosphere. But then, you know, there's downtowns where it's just the reality that there's not always room in the back for parking. There's not a lot of public parking. You do have a fair amount of on-street parking. Some downtowns don't have much at all on street. So, you know, it varies across downtowns and communities. But, so, we have done ordinances where the size of a surface parking area in the downtown is limited by either the number of spaces or square feet, literally regulating how much of a block or an area can be devoted to parking. Now, that has to work in tandem with parking management strategies and whether a downtown is at some point going toward parking structure, for example. And then there are downtowns that there are no parking requirements. And you better have an ample supply of options for people on street and public parking lots. But, yeah, there are plenty of downtowns we work with where individual properties and uses have no parking requirements. So, it's, all the parking is fair game for everyone. And, I mean, I can just keep going. We, because this is a whole area of zoning strategy. Another one is setting up credits to where you kind of allocate the on-street parking supply to where a business gets a credit. If they do have a parking requirement, say, you know, a small shop has to provide three, five spaces or something in a downtown area, they might get credit for two on-street spaces. So, they don't have as much of a burden. So, I mean, it just goes on and on, just different ways to tackle parking in a downtown area. But, so, between the combination of how you deal with parking, that can tie into where you set the bar on, are we going to say, across an entire downtown area, over time, we really want to pull things to the street? But, you know, some of the streets right around here, off of Main Street, there's, you know, small office buildings or homes that are set back maybe five feet. So, there is some green, there is some typical lawn. So, it's kind of a mix.
Do you want to do questions now or wait?
No, we're not going to wait. We're going to chip in anytime.
Conversation.
Sitting here with the
To conversation. Thank you.
Technology, and we should be looking at real examples.
Well, yeah, you can look at it downtown next to Adelita slash Merle's where that was the old pattern of a parking lot in front of the buildings.
Good thing you brought him out.
It was to your, to your left.
Oh, okay. I was just going to mention the example, I've used this street frequently of, you know, the variation along here where there's some buildings right at the sidewalk, and there's some yard here. So, a variation. And then, you know, that's, that's the situation that if you require bringing it all the way or pretty close to the street, you couldn't do service parking in front.
So, the zoning code as it exists talks about the need for X number of spaces based upon your square footage, the retail space, so forth and so on. Do other communities look at any sort of a time factor? In other words, if a restaurant needs 10 spaces, somebody is not going to park in that space at 8:00 AM and be there till 8:00 PM. So, it's going to come and go. So, how do you, or how do we work through the issue of what's the right time parameter, two-hour parking, one-hour parking, whatever?
Oh, that aspect too of the time limits on on-street parking. But, yeah, the other aspect is shared parking, that there's straightforward provisions that if you're in an area where there's complementary businesses that have different hours, different uses, to get credit for that.
Yeah. I mean, if I, if you have a different retail use, somebody may not park right in front of your store. They may park there, but they may go to the restaurant three doors down kind of thing.
So, it's shared parking and then credit for off-site parking. Now, some city attorneys aren't always comfortable with that because that gets into, you need to have an agreement in place that you've secured off-site parking that's dedicated for your use. But, again, just an array of zoning strategies. Then we have the situation two in downtown Littleton. If I can, I get this building here that has the underbuilding parking. So, and then the new building down near the Carnegie Library has some underbuilding parking right. Or does it?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's a whole nother variable of can you accommodate some of the parking onsite, but it's under the building? So, it's not taking up surface area?
Is there communities that, let's say, business wants to go into an older building, doesn't have nothing room for parking, but it's a change in use, maybe goes to a restaurant. In lieu of parking, they contribute towards a fund that eventually builds a parking garage, let's say. And you pay a big price per space that's normally required. I assume that happens in some communities.
We did an incentive approach in one ordinance where if you happen to be a property where there was a bus stop out front, and you contributed toward enhancing that bus stop, putting a shelter or something like that, you could get a credit against your parking. So, trying to tie parking to other means of getting there.
Carrots, carrots here and there. Okay. The historic district does that. It's what you obviously get forbearance of parking requirements if you opt into the district kind of thing. Talk a little bit though about the time issue. What do you see? I don't assume that, and that's just an ordinance, I assume, where council would determine their two-hour parking downtown or whatever it is.
If it's, if it's one site, and this might not be so much in Littleton's downtown, it's typically larger sites, but in mixed-use projects, there's a table in the ordinance that if you have a certain mix, say hotel, office, restaurant, residential, church, you know, things that can have all different timeframes for when people are there. It just, it's a calculation process, and you allocate spaces and kind of work out that it ends up reducing, if you had to meet the parking requirement for each of those individual uses, it would blow the site away.
Right.
But it brings down the parking requirement.
Right. I mean, is that something we're, is that something that's being contemplated with what we're talking about?
What we're talking about, yeah. The policy level, what were some of the things that we do? And then as a zoning aspect of it, that's what we would drill down into. How do we, can we have incentives? Do we want to have incentives? Do we want to look at our parking ratios? All that. But at this policy level and the con plan level, you know, even just having the statement of how flexible parking regulations that provide incentives.
And I think there's been some discussion that there might be a downtown planning effort or looking at parking in more depth. That would be perfect if you're looking at your zoning and that at the same time, because it's not just a regulatory issue, it's how you manage that entire supply and demand for parking in a downtown area.
I think some of the feedback we've heard, you know, from the vision work has been parking is a point of pain. A lot of people talked about their experiences trying to park downtown. But I think the reality is that addressing that, it's a lot more about circulation and those land use pieces. So, it's way more than just kind of trying to tackle parking in isolation. So, I think that both plans are going to clearly state the need to kind of crack that open and look, and take a much more deep look relative to downtown. And I think that's part of the reason some of our question about, you know, how do you define downtown? Like, what, what would that area look like? And what would it include in terms of looking at that, particularly the east-west connectivity? And is it more of, traditionally, we've talked about the football, right? And so, part of this conversation is kind of set up more of a bow and arrow.
Oh.
As in, and the arrow kind of pointing west.
And north.
And east.
Well, those are the feathers right now.
Okay.
Personally, yeah. And then that, that bow that happens between the railroad and Santa Fe. So, you know, that's, it's that, I think, will require, you know, a lot of, a lot more depth than where we're at with this policy conversation.
One question we had is, is this entire parking area only for melting pot? It's not public parking?
I think people use it. It's ballet parking, right?
It used to be the far north was up for grabs, but they might control it all. I don't know.
Because that's a, that's a pretty good chunk of parking area.
That could be, some have advocated a parking garage, multi-level using the hill as, and...
Who are some of those people?
Who the... My parking garage is at the other end. But can we get back to the setbacks? Down, if you, we've, we've looked at the downtown for so many years. It's not just one homogeneous area. It's, it really is several areas north of downtown. And north of Main Street has two or three areas that are really different. South is, Alamo is totally different. And then all the way to Rockhampton College. And I agree with the, down, the main street should always be built to the street. And part of the failure for years was the, on the West End, we had buildings that were set back with parking in front. There's still one or two left of those. But all the excitement of downtown, any kind of festival would always took place where the buildings were right on the street. And then it kind of died out as you went to the west. That changed with the new building there next to the melting pot. And that'll happen a few more times. But as you get to the feeder streets like Prince Street or, or, you know, the Arrow on the other end, those are, you know, approach areas. And perhaps there's, it's on the other end, those are, you know, approach areas, and perhaps there's, it's, it goes from the residential area on Littleton Boulevard, that's actually regular setbacks or residential, and it gets into tighter and tighter until you get to our downtown. So, that's kinda my feeling of the setbacks. As far as, let's talk a little, talk a little more about, you know, I think you would change the future land use map to, to kind of expand, kind of areas outside of the, you know, the dark blue, and I forget what you call them, urban downtown transition areas.
Actually, I don't have that. Yes, on the, on the earlier versions of the map, we had those areas around downtown that were question marks, should they be included? And we went ahead and changed those to a designation called Urban Downtown Transition, thinking it's kind of a next tier, a gateway to downtown, but it's also that area across Santa Fe that we've always talked about, the Dish of the Corner, and then the vacant corner at Bull. So, so it's that. On the other side of downtown, where we are on the image here, it's the first few blocks across the railroad tracks to Crocker, so, here. And it's because of these, even if they're former residential uses, some of these buildings here that, again, do have some, some front yard, but it's just a contrast from once Littleton Boulevard opens up farther down, and, you know, you really get the, the big parking areas out front. So it's more of that close-to-the-street feel as you approach downtown. And, you know, here's a good example of, and I believe that's, is that one of our mid-century moderns on the corner, so, there's an example of side parking. But it's not, you know, it's not downtown Main Street, so it's not that continuous wall of buildings, but, and then the courthouse, of course, is set back, but attractive landmark property. But just that sense of, yeah, you're approaching downtown. So, for those who weren't there last night, part of the discussion was that on the map right now, as I mentioned, we have the urban downtown transition starting at Crocker, and then my first group said, oh, let's take it to Windermere, another block or two, then let's take it to Detoura, thinking that that's where you make the turn to go to the museum and the library. Then it was, let's go to Broadway, and I'm fine with that, because right now, the Littleton Boulevard corridor, the rest of the ways in that corridor, mixed-use designation. I kinda like the idea of calling out that entire, at least the, the frontage properties as that's the vision for the future is, could that be a more walkable, buildings close to the street, atmosphere as redevelopment happens over time? And it's, it's gonna take time, but those properties certainly have the potential to do that.
You mean in the sense of over railroad tracks to Crocker in that manner versus the downtown area?
Yes, yes, as far as that, that urban downtown transition, that next level from downtown only goes to Crocker a few blocks from downtown.
Right.
It's gotta do with, take it to Broadway.
And if you maintain that, like, when you get that Windermere down to the railroad tracks, you have a lot of trees, and so while there's not much front yard, you still have a feel of the nature and the green because of the little that's there. So in that sense, if you continue that aspect of it, it gives it a more walkable feel while not being tight and closed in.
Yeah, and it's, it's the nature of some of the uses too, just that you're right near the rail station, the courthouse, the rec center, now with VITA there, and, you know, so.
I've always thought of Littleton Boulevard as four parts. It's not homogeneous, just like the downtown area, north and south of Main Street. You've got the area to Crocker, maybe it maybe stretches into Windermere, then you've got the commercial area, the old 50s commercial area with that new piece right there that used by courts now. Then you get into, go further east, you get into kind of the mixed, little, little ditty commercial on the north, residential on the south, and then finally you get to Littleton Boulevard with the, you know, with the, with the heavy-duty commercial.
And actually, this neighborhood is where you really couldn't do the, the down, the urban downtown transition on both sides. That neighborhood is what it is, for now.
I think that's okay. I think between Gallup and Bannock, I see there that you're never gonna get both sides of Littleton Boulevard to redevelop. So I would, I would say extending that transition area down to Detour or Gallup.
Yeah, I was saying Detour, it should be Gallup, sorry.
Yeah, because right now, there is commercial uses on both sides.
So you would take the, the urban downtown transition that further to the...
I mean, if we wanna change Littleton Boulevard, I think, we've been talking about changing Littleton Boulevard for a long time, and so that would be a big move.
Okay, I'm thinking more of keeping it, the corridor mixed use, but you could talk me into it probably.
Well, even if it's corridor mixed use, does that mean it's, you're not allowed to do a build to? Or what's the, is the character, it may still be the same?
To be, to be determined.
It's a distinction between urban and corridor that I think is coming out of this character study that's really interesting to me.
We don't have definition yet of, of, you know, what's new urban neighborhood, what's that mean? Urban downtown transition, what exactly does that mean? We'll, ah, okay.
We received tonight, it's on the website, but you have your personal copy. So that's, that's, as we were doing the pieces of the map in recent months, we'd given the descriptions of those categories, and now the whole enchilada.
And I think to your point, you were talking about how far down the corridor we do, but keeping in mind, you know, you're all getting the character the same, so I think when you, you know, like in your books where you show, you can have mixed use and maintain the character. So it gives a lot of variety, a lot of possibility, but yet it's cohesive. And I think that's a lot of what we're talking about here in this urban downtown, this transition, is that cohesion that we're also talking about. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a corridor, it's connecting our downtown, so it has double purpose. So if you maintain the cohesion and keep it a corridor, you can have the best of both worlds.
And at the end of the day, it's, it's that. I mean, yes, you might have some setback and some front parking, but once it's a sea of parking, you're in the auto-urban, which we've, which, by the way, we're using auto-oriented on the map, just 'cause it's more public-friendly, you know, an auto-oriented area. And just to remind everyone, the reason we use that term auto-urban, and it's the pie slice, all that business, it's the fact that urban areas and sites like this, it's the amount of coverage of the site, but in a downtown area, the coverage is much more buildings and sidewalks and walking. Here, the coverage is cars, parking. So, so it's an urban intensity of land coverage, but it's not all the other benefits of urban. It's auto-oriented.
Yes.
Do you have an example of, of sort of what the character could, that Littleton Boulevard could be with that sort of four-lane, I think it's, it's kind of a heavy, heavy-use road? I'm just curious if there's other examples in other communities of kind of what...
The roadway itself?
Just, just that right-of-way, the street section, you know, what, how, I guess I'm just, I'm still sort of, the whole idea of walkability and being able to cross the street north and south is gonna be...
I mean, I give you a variety of options. One is, it goes to two lanes, depending on traffic volume in other communities, and you get to very wide sidewalks and a large greenway area separating the sidewalk, or it's not a sidewalk anymore, it's a 12-foot bike head, two-way, lots of room to, for people to circulate, very heavy streetscape possibilities within rights-of-way, the median. I mean, it could be that the, the outside lanes are what are, remain, and the median becomes much wider. And I've seen treatments where there's a path on the median, that people actually walk in the center of the roadway.
Is there, is there...
I would say our best probably local example is parts of Colfax, especially as you get further east and west. When you think about the audio, the auto-orientation, and then new transformations happen. I think part of the transportation conversation on Broadway is about bus rapid transit, so continuing that high-frequency service of the zero line. You know, the major east-west connectors, the 66, and so that comes across on Arapahoe Road and then turns and comes down Littleton Boulevard. So if you were to think about, you know, lines that might increase their frequency, you know, Colfax might be an interesting way to kind of look at that. Particularly, not so much in the Denver parts, it's more like Lakewood and Aurora.
Another variation is when they do on-street bike lanes and have a, not just a stripe or a bumps, but three-foot separation, something that can be planted, that can be rumbel strip treatments, you know, those kind of things, so.
Do you have a real-world example of something that you've dealt, like community that you've dealt with that you can actually bring up on a map?
That's kinda where I was going, is like, what, what is kind of that character that we could expect that has a similar right-of-way? I'm guessing, I mean, I'm guessing the transportation master plan is gonna, I don't know, are they gonna say that we can actually reduce the width of Littleton Boulevard? Skeptical of that.
You can sort of donate off the auxiliary lanes. I mean, you look at the example of University, and it doesn't have left or right turn lanes and pushes a lot more traffic at a similar speed.
And I think one of the things that's part of that conversation right now is how you treat some of the modes more systematically, right? So is it bikes on Littleton Boulevard, or do you continue to make improvements one block north where bike lanes exist and really kind of have that more systematic approach? You know, where you should kind of continue to allocate based on the character of that roadway?
I think that's fine, but you don't wanna, you know, as we kind of move into the future and try to get multimodal transportation, you don't wanna sideline bikes or other uses to, like a secondary roadway and then not give them anything. Like, you need some wayfinding that complements to show, you know, to, to, to show somebody, oh yeah, I'm not gonna be on Broadway, so I can't, or on Littleton Boulevard, so I can't see all the businesses, I'm on the secondary roadway, where do I turn to go where I wanna go? I mean, I guess you're using your GPS to some extent, but, you know, I think you need some more wayfinding.
Well, and that's why I say, it's like part of, part of that conversation, I don't know that, I think how the, the character piece is what's influencing right now, that high-level look at the transportation system.
Right. You asked about the changing of the character along Littleton Boulevard. This would take many, many years, but you could introduce more, closer-to-the-street buildings, parking to the side, you know, when things are redeveloped. Use, for example, the Starbucks that's going in, if rules had been in place, that it would have been nice to push that dude out towards the street and have the parking to the side, and you have this, I mean, it's, it's a modernistic building, but why not? It's, we've got a lot of mid-century modern, that building should have been pushed to the street. It, it, then it starts changing the character as you go along.
It brought the patio out to the street and activated that a little more.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not like downtown, right to the property line, but, you know, back of air, you know, enough for trees, et cetera. Yeah, I mean, that, that's, as that property redeveloped, yes, but...
There's another consideration.
Given that that's a pad site, the less, the less ease in the shopping center probably have prohibitions against cutting off sightlines for customers driving by. So in other words, it might not be possible as it currently exists to, to, to push it out and block visibility. But if the whole thing were being redeveloped, maybe it's a case. If you had, you know, four pads out there, I could see the, the argument, one, one Starbucks pad, but, yeah, it's tough, because it has rights and has conditions. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, the time factor there is gonna be, it's gonna take a while. And it's really, it really, I guess, that's a kind of redevelopment issue as opposed to existing use on the existing site, has to take these other things into consideration if they exist, which they may or may not. Littleton Boulevard is, I mean, it doesn't get the traffic, it's a dead-end street on the east end, but it's ripe for, hopefully, future redevelopment. When that happens, we can do something better for that street. There you go.
Let's see, our next item is old news, because we have the neighborhood conservation discussion, and check. So, just for this group's information, you know, we put that idea out there typically when we're doing the future land use, and we got the reaction here, we do it in some places where it's like, what's that? And how does that work? And what's that gonna mean? So, that can come back around during zoning discussion down the road, but in the meantime, we took a Plan B approach, and on the map now, there's two different designations where neighborhood conservation was before. One of them is the light brown urban neighborhood, and for those that were there last night, it's kind of the, oh, that's right, we've got it on the screen now. So, neighborhoods that are relatively close to downtown and to Littleton Boulevard, but it's also that it's the blocks that have a rear alley. And so it's not necessarily that all those street faces have no driveways, there's driveways and cars parked out front, and that's why on the existing land use and character, we had put mixed character in that area, I believe was what we called it, because it's, it's a mix, but there are places where, yeah, there's not a front driveway, and people do use a rear garage and use the alley to access their property. So, so that's part of that from a character standpoint. The area next door to the east that's in the, the yellow, that is called residential mix now, and we kind of carved out an area very purposely that it's a mix of single-family detached, duplex, apartment buildings, apartment complexes, so there's a lot that's gone on there over time, townhouse or attached housing forms. And so, our thinking is, keep go, keep doing it. I mean, of any area in Littleton, that's an area that's already that way, in so many communities we work in, that could never have happened just because of zoning, you would never allow that. This area, it did happen, and so, including the demographics of the area, the location, plus, between these two designations and the potential for Littleton Boulevard to redevelop, that's a good complementary situation of redeveloped corridor and some neighborhoods that are different from a lot of the rest of Littleton, plus the transit potential on Broadway, the bus rapid transit. So the combination of all those things just seems like a good area to continue to promote a mix of housing, and hopefully at some attainable levels of price. Now, the, the new construction on the Norgren Block, that's more proposed, that's more townhome style, is what I understand, or?
Slender, tall.
Tall. So, I mean, there you go.
There's also the conversation last night, would we want to consider allowing, like, neighborhood convenience stores or ethnic restaurants to be in this area too?
And I think I can quote that, that was from the, she said, you know, if we're encouraging a mix of housing, why not corner stores and ethnic restaurants? So, you know, you certainly gotta deal with that through zoning to, for compatibility for the neighbors, if it's residential, but send parking and all those things, but, you know, on Windermere, for example, there's, there's a history there of, I think there's a corner insurance office, if I'm remembering correctly. Oh, I gotta get back to Littleton. But anyway, that's the idea of those two versus what was on the sheet from a while back about neighborhood conservation, so.
I always equated living in that area as living in a country club. You've got, everything's close by, downtown, light rail, Buck Center, courthouse, you've got, you've got everything, you've got nice views, you've got older homes that are just, a lot of them are really well-maintained, Craftsman-style houses, it's a fantastic area. Does it need that kind of protection overlay that you were putting on first? Probably not, but it, but I like the idea of that, of what you call, yeah, new urban residential. Makes a lot of sense. It's a really unique, good area.
So, the neighborhood conservation, as we laid it out, and, and that's something we do to carry over to zoning, is, is the bottom-line point of that is customized zoning... do to carry over to zoning, is, is the bottom-line point of that is customize zoning by neighborhood so that you don't have like an R1 zoning. And, and often, this is in more suburban communities that are still growing, that have a lot of development to go, and what we see oftentimes is your typical R1 standard, single-family detached zoning is also on some of your oldest neighborhoods, and you end up seeing a lot of variance in those neighborhoods because it just, that zoning doesn't always make sense, so. But it's also to capture, it can be an architectural component that neighborhoods always had front porches and that, or houses had front porches in that area, and it can be a setback thing that you're trying to preserve in a neighborhood, so. But it's that, ultimately, it's that idea of customized zoning for a neighborhood, so that could come back around when the zoning discussions happen, but.
Could be R3 asterisk, whatever you want to call it, okay.
Let's see, I think that was the end of our, our zoning, or land use issues list, and there were some other broader questions that we posed? So those weren't so much in, from us, I guess, or from our work. Didn't know where those might have come from, just collecting.
Brainstorming.
Kind of guilty. But, well, I, it was, it was a reaction to, I think we spent a ton of time on auto, auto suburban, and it got to the point where just, it seemed like we discussed it to death. I wanted to get to some of the bigger issues. It also was in tandem, I, I had asked Bruce and Robin and myself to come up with our top five issues, and you had a few more, but, but they were very similar.
I just bullet you with paragraphs.
Yeah. She had bullets, I had, you know, multi-page paragraphs, but, but anyway, so, these were some of the things that I, I wanted to get a discussion going on. Like, for me, my top five was the river, downtown, density, it's the Santa Fe, Santa Fe's the big, the big elephant, and then Broadway, Littleton Boulevard, aging shopping center, you know, or aging corridors, major corridors. So, that's how these came about. The first one was our second speaker from, or Thomas, talked about organic versus planned, and he came across, he's a planner, and he, he was gonna plan everything, but he did say organic, and, and in my mind is, what's, what can be left to the market, what can be left organically, and do we, do we plan it to death? We got a Disney, you know, Disneyland, a fairyland that has no reality. So, that, that, I want to talk about that a little bit.
And by organic growth, is it, is it population growth or just evolution of the community and development over time?
Yes, the second.
Second?
Not population growth, but.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, what, what do you leave to the individual?
Well, is that yellow neighborhood we were just looking at, is that kind of, was that, because you said you wouldn't see that normally, right? There apartments, single-family, just. Or, I'll say it again, I've probably said this three times in meetings, I mean, we're out of the Houston area, that's a Houston situation, not, I mean, we absolutely have purely single-family detached neighborhoods without zoning, but, but yeah, to let duplex pop up next to single-family, next, and go around the corner and there's a 10-unit apartment building, that's interesting, and in zoned cities, so to even allow it to happen on a same block versus maybe some allocation of that, but why not? And if, but as in the downtown situation, as things are turning over, there's some interesting side-by-side issues, that's what we deal with, with no zoning in Houston, so. But when you say organic, I mean, I think about Littleton Boulevard absolutely, but, you know, the Columbine Square site, I mean, does that have to be, just replace it with another strip center, or? And the reason we put, let me check the map, it's mixed, it's got a core mixed use. The reason we didn't just, we took it down to where the nursery operation is, and then the county's voting, the reelection's building, why not? And that those may be there for a long, long time, but boy, if, if that could be put together, talk about organic, I mean, let's see what's proposed for something like that, or if somebody only deals with the frontage piece, the old Columbine Square piece. I'm, I'm not quite sure, because I didn't, I actually didn't hear that presentation, what he meant by organic.
He wasn't quite clear, just, just got my mind rolling as to how far does planning, or planning go? Dictation of everything, every piece? Nitpicking designers to death, let's say, or developers to death? When do you allow a little creativity and little human, let's call it, you know, human spirit to, to have some fun with this, you know, with their site?
Social sustainability, like what is socially needed? Is that gonna drive development?
Yeah, I didn't quite get all your.
Um, like, spanning the socioeconomic, like, if we're taking care of the community holistically, we have multiple income levels, multiple people, different people that are here, so evolving organically can be a way that we serve our community socially. Does that, does that make sense? Not like social, like, go out and party, but social status, social economics.
Well, let me use another example that I think maybe some of you heard, depending on which, can't remember which meeting I've been in and said what, but, across from Heritage High School, because one of the, one of the things we hope this map doesn't convey with all that suburban and estate in the core and south area of Littleton is that, that's the way it's gonna be forever. You know, I heard, I haven't really seen it on a large scale, but there were discussions, say, 10 years ago, that we're gonna have ghost subdivisions in different parts of the country, that everybody was moving to urban centers, and young popular, young demographic wasn't gonna buy single-family homes anymore, and, you know, we're not there, but the example I've used, so, I'm looking at the aerial view, but, you know, this is the estate area on the map, the future land use map, but say, you know, these three, say somebody bought three lots, and those owners are ready to go, they're done, they're moving out, and they all happen to be on the market at the same time, and this is certainly a trend around the country, investors buying homes instead of individuals. What if somebody bought, or an individual bought those three lots and replanted and wanted to do, replanted it to one lot, and wanted to do six attached units? Oh my God, that can't be done there, because that's an estate area, and it has a minimum lot size, and by God, in certain parts of the country, there's a minimum house size to keep houses at a certain size. The point of the character emphasis is, as long as there's dominant green space on that site and you buffer what's next door, because there still are estate properties in the interior of that neighborhood, why can't there be six units there? Why can't they be attached? As long as the overall character of that area is still a suburban green feel. So that's how, that's organic. That's how an area like this could change, and that's market flexibility, but that's the character emphasis, is don't worry about what type of house it is, whether it's attached or detached. Certainly, we don't want a 40-story condo tower there. That would never happen. There is some limit on density, but, but the way the character zoning approach sets it up is, if you want to go to more density on a site, you're exchanging open space for it. So, so there's a limit to that, there's only so much room to work with there. So that's, that's, that's an example that I wanted to use for organic growth, to also make that point, that we're not saying that this area is locked in forever. It could be 20 years from now, who knows? And this may stay just the way it is, but I think some people have taken that this is the way this area's gonna be forever. Doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be, but conversely.
But zoning needs to follow that thinking.
Firstly, you know, a lot of communities, it's zoning schmoaning, like in Denver, they, they go in there and, you know, here's, here's zoning rules for heights, and then somebody proposes a, you know, 18-story when five are allowed, and council usually goes along with it, and people are up in arms in the city of Denver. That's not organic, that, that, that's not an, you know, my nebulous thinking of organic, that's not a good example of what I would think would be organic.
You know, the other example I can give on the non-residential side, the core of mixed-use category that we've shown on various corridors, I've given that example of who knows, you know, where all the car dealerships are, they'd be there forever, what if they turned over? What if that went away? Or something along Santa Fe. You know, some land use maps would have red of corners of major intersections, that's your commercial corners, and then you might have some multifamily designation around that to transition to single-family neighborhoods, that's technical planning. That is, that is, what was the other word versus organic?
Inorganic?
Prescriptive, very, this is the way we're gonna do it. That's not how the world works. The property owner that's the next property away from the intersection, they may not want to do apartments, so, the mixed-use designation along the corridor is saying, a variety of things could happen here, there's gonna be parameters on it within zoning, but why are we saying commercial can only happen at certain corners, or that a mix of uses has to go through plan development approval process? Why can't that be a more straightforward path and be flexible for where development trends and market trends are going, and how property values change over time, what's actually possible to do on these sites? It's also the idea that, you know, you've got some very large properties there, and then you've got some very tiny and constrained properties along corridors like this. You know, you, we've definitely built in the zoning ordinances, if you assemble properties, we'll give you some incentive, you know, density bonus, something for having helped us along by not having piecemeal development scattered across small properties, let's put some properties together, get some better plan development, maybe mixed use, higher value, higher quality, so, you know, what we try to do in our zoning approach is, it's not about no, what you can't do, it's yes, what we want you to do, or what we're trying to lead you to that matches the plan as well.
There's also another piece, is what the market will, will force you to do, let's say, what if all of a sudden, you know, half-acre lots are preposterous to, you know, 100 years from now? My neighborhood is, then, what's Aberdeen Village, then it becomes broken up in smaller homes. I don't know what the trend's gonna be 100 years from now. Could happen, or it could be reversed, everybody wants a little farm in Littleton, so instead of, you know, 5,000 homes, you have 300 homes.
But the other piece to all this is, and this will be in the conference plan, is the plan has to be revisited every year to keep up with what's going in the marketplace, and where do we stand, and we better look at our zoning map once a year, and our future land use map.
So, not the every 40 years that we do now.
And I think, you know, organic growth is driven by the market, I mean, it's very market-driven, and if you just take the zoning away, as Houston never had back in the day, you know, it grew organically because you could do it, you could do what made sense from the marketplace, and I think the flexibility that mixed-use zoning has in the Denver example, I think is interesting, because that's a form-based code there, but a lot of their zone districts are mixed use, and they're either residential mixed use or commercial mixed use, so there's a basis in commercial use or residential or industrial, but there's always that MX at the end that allows you to do other things in that district too, and that allows, I think, for more organic growth driven by economics.
But sometimes the market goes overboard.
Yes, yes.
Be market-driven, and then we get this example of now apartments, 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 and they get overbilled, or retail, 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 then it becomes overbilled. It's because that's what the developers or property owners and whoever think is the thing to do, and then it suddenly becomes not marketable anymore, and that happens over and over and over. You know, it happened down 10 years ago with the high-rise buildings, and then the market eventually comes back and absorbs, but now we're seeing just apartments, apartments, apartments everywhere, especially arms' favorite kind, cell block.
Block 17?
Yeah, those. So, I don't know, that's concerning as well.
So, in, in another community where we used the core of mixed-use designation on the future land use map, on the zoning side, they were concerned about apartments, because part of what we're saying in the text is, keep the interior as the lower intensity, more single-family detached atmosphere, if more significant apartments are proposed, again, with the transit connection as well, try and keep them out near the corridors. But the issue of too much apartments, when you need the commercial tax base in these areas as well, we wrote an ordinance five, seven years ago in a core of mixed-use area where I believe the number was 20, that only 20% of that corridor could be multifamily. So it's first come, first served. When we hit that limit, done. Rest has to be not apartments, it has to be commercial or other things. So, I mean, you, there's different ways to skin the cabinet, always, but, and what that meant was, staff had to do a baseline calculation of how much, it's, it's tied to square footage, square footage, so they had to go through appraisals and add up the current square footage in the, in the corridor, and they monitor it year by year if apartment projects are built. And, you know, they left themselves the out that if we hit 20%, we'll reevaluate and say, well, should we ratchet it up to 30, or how's it looking? How's the market playing out? Just, we've done the same thing with, I was having this discussion with somebody today that, I'm not picking on anybody, but that gas station near the mineral station just drives me crazy. What a terrible place for a gas station.
I don't let happen, yeah. I wouldn't allow it to.
But yeah, you can set, you can say that auto-oriented uses like gas stations, car repair aren't allowed in certain scenic areas, but yeah, we've done the same thing, that only a certain percentage of a corridor frontage properties can be gas stations. Or, oh yeah, drive-through, same thing, same thing.
There's one being proposed in the last undeveloped piece of property that, in Littleton, and it doesn't belong there.
So, this all came about from organic growth, we could talk about that all night. I guess organic is partly more market flexibility, but when it was, I had population on my mind where, you know, population could kind of come in ebbs and flows and kind of driven by the market too, and.
I think another organic growth thing that is occurring, and how we want to handle it, is this whole kind of multi-generational, which 50 years ago was, you had multi-generational households, and all of a sudden, there's kind of that shift as housing costs get higher, so, you know, how, that's where the whole, except, not totally, but the accessory dwelling unit conversation, that can happen regeneratively, it can change areas, does it, you know, where do we want that to go? That changing densities, changing land use, is it just in a certain area, or does that start to organically change down here, if you permit it down here? So, just another example.
Yeah, I think you're, you're on to something there, like, that if the property values get so high that people, young people can't afford to live here, then somebody's gonna convert their garage into an ADU and rent it out, and then somebody's gonna have their housing need met affordably, somebody else is gonna have another source of revenue, and that's gonna happen whether or not we zone for it or not, right? To some extent. So, there is that market demand that drives organic growth, but I don't think it's always a good thing, it's, it's gonna be sort of rein back, the market is good at predicting what's gonna happen next quarter, next year, maybe even five years, but we're looking 20, 25 years into the future with this plan, so that's where you're gonna have to rein back that growth.
And I think also having adaptable uses, I mean, you're talking about all the apartments that are getting built, or all the mixed use that are getting built, and I think when those things are built, we have to keep in mind of how quickly things are changing. So, I think having character-based zoning, which I think is really what we're, we're moving to, will allow us to adapt more than, you know, a mixed-use residential, mixed-use commercial, mixed-use industrial, you know, behind, you know, it's a mixed-use character, residential character, and then, you know, you're talking about the triplexes, and these models of homes up there, even in Highlands Ranch, they're, they're fourplexes, but they look like a mansion, but they're. they look like a mansion, but they're four separate, four sale units in them, so.
Even in Trailmark, there's the one area in Trailmark that has the attached housing and we didn't think about it until we got up close and there's multi-units there. Because there's tons of open space in the, in the general area. It's very suburban atmosphere.
You know, as we're talking about housing too and affordability, you know, the previous planning magazine pointed out that mixed-use housing right now, they're saying is more expensive. It's actually in those areas, housing is more expensive. And the APA just had an article out about how walkability in those areas, and they use Denver as an example, also makes housing more expensive. So, you know, we have to keep those things in mind as we're talking about how we want to do our housing.
People like nice things.
And there's a beauty to it. I mean, you know, Denver's different than Littleton. We're not Denver, but the same idea is if it's, you're seeing this trend, mixed-use is causing housing to go up, walkability is causing housing to go up. They haven't studied why. I haven't seen a why. They're just noticing that this trend is something to consider also.
For years, that was used as a sales pitch for new urban neighborhoods because you'd compare a Highlands Ranch to a new urban walkable community and home prices would appreciate more in the new urban community, which I see as a good thing and that does bring up the idea of ADU and other options for affordability. My first experience with an ADU was a friend who lived in a converted garage in Monterey, California, which is a notoriously expensive housing market. Another aspect of kind of the organics is the scrape-offs. I noticed just this week that there are two in the block of Detoura north of Littleton Boulevard, which is in the Progress Park neighborhood, which is a lot of bungalows built in the 50s. And I suspect we're going to see those, you know, former one-story buildings converted into two-story buildings that occupy the absolute maximum the zoning will allow. And, you know, it sort of ties into crafting a zoning that allows organics but preserves the character.
So, my six, my first six months working out of college was in the New York suburbs and I was in the garage, the basement of a split-level house and I had the bathroom sink, was Mike's sink. Circle. Had a, one of those plug-in burners, that was my kitchen. I had one of those stall showers that was about this wide, like you'd have in a cabin, totally against any code. 90% of the homes probably in that area had something like that and none of that was on the books. It was just a look the other way situation from the government standpoint because nobody could live there otherwise if they didn't have that income to pay their taxes. It gave me a place to live. If I didn't have that, I would have been driving an hour to get to work. So, my point being that it can happen in the look the other way standpoint or it can turn into a code enforcement nightmare that you got to constantly be looking for these things because they're going to happen or you can manage it and have some rules on the books. So, we definitely had some diverging opinions on that topic last night. So, it's good that we heard them because we were going to pursue that option. I think it needs to be out there, but, you know, it's one of those, consider the possibility of one of those comp plan worded items like that. Explore the possibility.
Yes.
But it's part of, it's in the housing study. It's part of the palette of options of how you deal with housing affordability.
I think we beat organic growth to death pretty well.
Yes, we've beaten that. Only in 20 minutes.
It was, it's very interesting. Well, one other, beat it up a little, 20, 30 seconds. Yeah, I consider myself somewhat organic and driven by market, but then it happens in Littleton so many times that group, that, they go hog wild. Littleton is, tries, is reacting to the situation that happens rather than being proactive. That's the reason for the exciting prospect of a comp plan that gets, has a plan for, rather than retroactively trying to figure it out once it already happened and it's way past controlling. We always just kind of wait.
Yeah, I mean, you got to set your parameters for, as was mentioned, how far the market go in our community in terms of height and intensity and all those things.
How far the parameters go is the, is the real discussion down the road, right? Okay, next.
So, we have the next one, do we want to geographically grow or work with what we have?
And that, that's interesting because that was one of our slide items at one of the joint leadership sessions was we are going forward assuming this is it, there's no annexation. Because one of our first questions when we got involved in Littleton was Colorado has that requirement that you have to update an annexation plan every five years. Well, that's something else that hasn't been done in Littleton in a while. So, if you, if you wanted to annex, that would be job one if you'd have to update that plan since that's a state requirement. But, yeah, I mean, partly with our timeframe, we were just assuming, plus the fiscal aspect of Littleton's outlook, just you got enough to handle in your current state limits, you know, and if, what is there really to annex around that is not residential? So, just adding to the service burden and not so much revenue. But anyway, so that was our approach was we were assuming no annexation anytime soon.
Probably the right approach. What, I hear some nods, what do you think?
There are, yeah, I think the short answer to that is yes. There had been over the years conversations, annexation-oriented conversations, the most famous of which were things like Sterling Ranch down by Chanfield.
Yikes.
And the other one that came up had to do with Southwest Plaza.
No more, just going to take that out.
Well, there was, it was convoluted and ultimately, of course, it never went anywhere. But the practical implications are, I think we're pretty much landlocked at this point. I think the right answer is, let's figure out what we can do with what we've got in terms of guiding development that's beneficial to the community, redevelopment that's beneficial to the community as opposed to what I might consider to be more, you know, pie in the sky kind of stuff that's, that's long shot and/or maybe not in the community's best interest depending on your point of view.
Yeah, going forward, that option is always there as long as there's unincorporated area next to your city, but...
But where is unincorporated land? I mean, that's what I'm...
Southwest corner of Black Canyon and Bowls.
Yes, head west.
Mostly vacant.
You'd have to go all the way to get some retail.
Black Canyon and Bowls, just...
Safe.
You've already got it figured.
There's tax revenue involved. I mean, we buy Littleton.
That actually is a town.
County has not received any inquiries or applications recently. Something was denied there about a year and a half ago.
Okay, okay.
Future of retail, that's an easy one, let's see.
We're talking about annexation though, just not that I'm in favor or against the idea of Trailmark being a separate piece way out Jefferson County or Douglas County. Jefferson, Jefferson County. That was originally, I think, annexed into the city because of fire and police or maybe water or something.
I think it was a golf course, was, they were going to, we were going to get another golf course or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think the history on that one is that they started with that, but there was an expectation that the property in between was going to be developed and annexed also and then ultimately it became open space to perpetuity at that point. You ended up with the Hawaiian Islands.
So, is there an advantage or disadvantage to them being part of the city?
It's an advantage to them, but not necessarily to the city in terms of revenue generation and cost. I worked on so many of those projects, I'm sorry, that's all, you know, revenue generation. It's just, there's just not, it's all residential.
Oh, there's one little spot. Commercial. Okay.
There's a salon or something.
There's one little spot that's commercial, but the most recent proposal is for senior housing. I don't think it's come through, but there's been...
I think they would have a lot of takers from that neighborhood for the senior housing.
There would be a big backlash against that. It was, it was supposed to be commercial and that's what people want.
The neighborhood shop. So, I wonder if there's a...
There was also supposed to be, there was also supposed to be a school.
Not for the second. It's going to be edgy and something.
That one sort of...
There might be a benefit to that interest.
And there were assessments or fees involved and they were supposed to pay for things as the thing grew and then ultimately they went away and I think the community didn't re-up them or was interested in seeing them go away to youth centers and rec centers and this kind of thing. So, it's, it's, there's been a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of history out there, various issues.
Future of retail, you know, it's kind of like I was saying about ghost subdivisions and that we were all going to be driving electric vehicles by now and, you know, those kind of projections, but, you know, I've heard the discussion that, you know, we're still in the teens of percentage of online retail sales, I believe. It's not taking over, but it's changing the pattern. But then, I mean, that's a whole world unto itself of different sectors of retail and what goes to big box like IKEA versus all the competition in the grocery sector. So, there's just so many dimensions to retail, but, and then the, another thing I've read recently is, you know, the limits of delivery, that idea of where you do your pickup, you preorder groceries, go pick up outside the store, the logistics of doing that, is it really going to be profitable on a mass scale for, for these industries to do that? But then the other one is, you know, I keep hearing that the Amazon model for it to work is all tied to the drone delivery. I just don't, I don't understand how that's going to work. I just don't get it. So, I'm just, I'm just kind of shaking my head on that one. It's a kind of a crystal ball of future of retail.
But you're the kind of guy that goes to the bank, you know, to make your deposits, so.
Well, part, so part of that pushback was the old thing about that your mom, pop and more local business, not the big box, it's about customer service and the experience and those kind of things that, yeah, there's going to be, there's all these chains that are closing that around the country going bankrupt, but the whole retail sector is not going down the tubes. Malls outlive that model, but then there are malls that are thriving, that are in the right location and doing the redesign of how they're configured. So, it's just, there's so much to talk about on there. So, let's talk about Littleton. Aging commercial centers, that's probably number one. And one of our discussion items, I wish I had been at that table, but for those that did the circulation, we had that question about should Littleton give up any of its current non-residential footprint? In other words, never rezone any, anything that's commercial now to residential, which is part of the corridor mixed-use thinking that hopefully this is the tax base emphasis, but it could have a housing component if it's mixed-use to also be addressing the housing need in Littleton. But...
Whose idea was that to never rezone?
That was a provocative question from us to put out there. In a community that already is overwhelmingly residential, should you really try to hold line? And, I mean, literally case by case, that needs to be a consideration of that we don't give up what we have.
A big reason for that is our largest financial source at this point, obviously, is sales tax. That's just how these values in Colorado are modeled right now. Is it the best model moving forward? No. Do we have to come up with other models to have sources of revenue? Yes, but right now, it's sales tax. So, if we give up spaces that could financially generate sales tax, do we want to make that part of the consideration when somebody requests a rezoning?
Well, I'm not sure how you, how, I mean, it just, it seems like it's, in the past, it's been kind of the makeup of the council, it seems like, that decides that. Because years ago, in another life of mine, I inquired the city if they could rezone a couple of properties that were, you know, kind of the last properties in, making properties in town to residential from commercial and they're like, no way. This is the last, they're saying the same thing. They were saying the same, these are the last properties, they have to go commercial, they have to stay commercial, they have to, you know, generate revenue. What did they become? What on mineral and Black Canyon is now residential with, you know, maybe a little bit of retail.
Well, I think that's what happens when you don't have policies in place and a comp plan in place that has to drive decisions. The council has been in a completely reactionary mode and now we're trying to get into this proactive mode that, I mean, it's, obviously, it's still up to the council, but we and staff can stand in front of them and say, you know, okay, economically, this is, this is the trade-off if you do this and we've never been able to do that.
It's also commercial property is more valuable in terms of property tax, especially based on our laws here, you know, because we, a lot of the brain needs to run from commercial versus residential property tax, but it seems that there should be some kind of, even if we, you know, the focus was we want to preserve as much of our commercial or, you know, commercially zoned property as possible, however, there are pieces of property that are not appropriately zoned, you know, because we, we had one that came up here that a lot of folks on the, on the commission thought really was not necessarily, it should retain its commercial zoning, that one with now is going to be those stand-up, whatever those townhomes are or whatever, but...
Cityscapes.
Yes, cityscapes. But, you know, with those, sometimes there, there's a piece of property in a, in a location that just absolutely makes no sense to be zoned for commercial or retail because nobody's ever going to utilize that or be able to generate any business on it. So, you know, I think everything has an exception. If that's like in general, we say, we don't want to rezone any commercial properties ever, but there are some pieces, if you make a good case for it, that it should happen.
Yeah, I don't see it as a hard and fast rule, but I see it as a thing that planning commission and council always have to have that in mind, that that's our financial outlook long-term, that we got to think about our tax base.
I think there's another dimension to this particular question. And we're making the assumption that we continue to be predominantly sales tax oriented as far as the predominant, the major revenue source for the community. Ultimately, the community has a need for funding to provide services, streets, police, fire, sewer, you know them all. But the question is, what's the, at some level, this was oriented towards what's the proper source of that revenue? Certainly to date, it has been sales tax, but what if because of where retail is moving and a variety of other issues and so forth and so on, what if we reoriented our tax base away from commercial retail sales taxes to hypothetically property taxes? The, the tax base for the community might change dramatically, which would take the pressure off with respect to some of these kinds of questions having to do with rezonings. Now, all of a sudden, you know, a rezone from a commercial parcel to a residential parcel is less of a problem hypothetically. I'm not necessarily saying we should do this, I'm saying it's a valid question to ask. And what is the community desire? I mean, sales tax revenue, you know, during '07, '08, when the last recession hit, sales tax revenues, I have to go look at the curve, but I'm assuming our sales tax revenues declined. Our outlays for police, fire and streets probably didn't. And generally speaking, property taxes, for example, are going to be a lot more stable in their application, which match with relatively high fixed costs on some of these other services that we need. So, it was just, it was as much to pose the question as well is, you want to stay with sales tax revenue? Great, let's do that. But there's implications to that and maybe it's worth... And maybe it's worth considering other models as part of the interest.
Yeah, for us, I think the missing piece in Littleton has always seemed like, where's the office buildings? Um, just where is office use in this community, except for a few isolated examples? But, but yeah, in, in Colorado, it's not the only state. We're doing work in Oklahoma. Oklahoma is all about sales tax. Property tax means nothing to local government, so you want every restaurant chain and every retail outlet you can get in your community.
But, but that, and that's, those are our choices in terms of the characters of the community to resolve from that decision.
But that's a, a state framework.
That's a state issue. Oh, completely. I mean, I think of, when we lived in New York and the cool communities to live in, like Littleton, had very high property taxes, but it could maintain that very cool character with that money. And it wasn't necessarily, you know, it's not recession-proof, but it's certainly more stable than the sales tax.
I think that another one flip side of that question about not giving up the footprint of non-residential is, is the residential, some amount of density rooftops that might support a more vibrant retail situation, say in the Littleton Boulevard quarter? Or is it, you got to look at income too? That gets into gentrification because one of the items that a council member brought up last night is, it's, it's on our board here somewhere. How do you maintain a level of quality without driving people out? Um, so, but, you know, disposable income is, retail's looking for rooftops and income in a certain radius. And so, so that would be a flip side of not just saying, oh, we, we don't want any residential. There might be situations where, yeah, residential is the more strategic decision.
I want to talk about that scenario that you posed, not that you agree with it, but that, uh, when you put residential where commercial used to be, you know, every, you know, uh, commercial loses. It can be the exact opposite, as you just alluded to, it could reinforce each other. I use, for example, Streets of South Glen. For me, if I, I'd put up another two or three towers, uh, you know, there's those apartments there, you could do condos maybe now, get some more, get some more butts in, living in that neighborhood and that would reinforce the Streets of South Glen. That, that makes sense, that they, they feed off each other and help each other.
Yeah, you know, we've, Meredith and I have talked a lot about, um, the area.
That could happen on our, some of our arterials in certain locations.
Yeah, you know, this stretch of Broadway, um, and this, you know, single family homes on that level of roadway, and certainly that's happened over time certainly, but just doesn't make sense from a lot of standpoints, including traffic management, having driveways from homes on a corner like that. But then you go down the road a bit and we've got the strip of, uh, retail that's on, you know, very shallow properties and old, old retail. Just, so in both cases, it's just very difficult situations to deal with because the, the properties are so shallow and, um, in one case, it's kind of not the most viable property anymore for retail. In the other case, it's single family homes on a very busy roadway.
That's, one of the problems with Littleton Boulevard, the, the properties on the north side are so shallow, it's tough. You'd have to assemble a block almost.
So we have both of those areas in core mixed use and, um, you know, we've seen situations where people.
Viable.
Uh, two things, you know, you allow homes to convert to more office uses or things like that. Typically, restaurant doesn't work because parking, um, unless it, say on Littleton Boulevard, if it was more walkable, don't need as much parking, but, or it's assembly. You've got to assemble a series of shallow properties so you can develop more horizontally along the roadway and work the parking in there somewhere, because there's just not a lot of room to work with.
Thing that may help with sales tax is that, you know, House Bill 1240 was signed into law this year, which makes destination-based sales tax the rule. So if anything is delivered to my house in Littleton from a company, regardless of that company's location, they have to pay Littleton sales tax or I have to pay it. So that may ameliorate some of the issues with, you know, residential taking over formerly commercial areas. And, you know, we talked a little bit about urban mixed use having higher property values. Those have commercial components, which for Gallagher collect more sales, uh, property tax than residential will. So that does speak to, you know, kind of the potential for mixing uses and including residential with the commercial.
And that's the Gallagher amendment that happened a number of years ago. Um, that's being challenged, of course, every year, more so as their business and businesses are challenging Gallagher. So anyway, there's all those things out there that, you know, we don't necessarily have any control over, but they could certainly have, in which case, um, residential property taxes would go up. Right? Right? Right.
So in the, you know, the Urban Land Institute world, the development community, mixed use was the wave of recent decades, but now it's destination experience, mixed use, not just drive up to a place. I mean, we're all going to have our things we need to do, groceries, whatever, where it's drive up, get it, drive out, but we're more of a focus on stay awhile, um, experience.
Take the light rail to it.
Again, instinctually, it seems that to preserve the amount of commercially zoned property that we have makes a lot of sense. We have that potential to keep that sales tax base. But, you know, based on the discussion and changing, changing trends in retail, I wonder if, um, smaller, whether it's really tied to the amount of horizontal land that you have, or you have those destinations that maybe could exist in smaller footprints, allowing, you know, residential or maybe even a higher density of residential to fill in around the, sort of a mixed use scenario. So maybe we don't have to say, okay, no, no encroachment into commercial area, but there's a, but focus on the commercial area and making it, making its potential more, you know, how, how do you generate more sales tax from a smaller footprint? I don't know.
Value of the merchandise and volume. Um, you know, we've got, I kind of like to watch what grocery chains are up to because, you know, there's developments where it's grocery first level and office or multifamily above. We've got a chain in our area that's kind of experimenting with the two-story model where the, the grocery store is upstairs, first level is parking, and you take an escalator up to the actual grocery level. But that's, it's, it's land value. It's so they can have a smaller footprint on a higher value property than otherwise they couldn't do their typical horizontal grocery store model.
The target, the target they just built on the 16th Street Mall downtown is an interesting example.
It's, New York has a lot of exits, of course.
The escalator for shopping cars.
Yeah, you put them on it.
And it changes, you know, change, change runs.
Even have those in Mexico. IKEA has that, they do have Mexico.
One at Lakewood got redeveloped that way. There's a target, the Whole Foods with parking underneath. It's a, it used to be Phil Italia, it's now.
Paul Farrelly.
That's right.
Well, let's see, uh, let's, uh. So I, I just wanted to plug again, how much emphasis we put on annual review and reporting of what's happening with the comp plan with this map. And it's that market monitoring and trend monitoring that who knows? We're looking 20 years, but who knows what's going to play out in a variety of areas, types of land use, residential, commercial, so. It can take 30 years to redo the plan.
By the way, our existing code, uh, like B2 allows, is a little caveat back of the code, it says, you know, 50% of that can be residential. It's there now. So a lot of these properties in the, the light blue zone could, could have residential under law and be built tomorrow.
With parameters.
With parameters, but, yeah, it's allowed. Taken to extreme by the Grove, but that's another story. Um, we're going to try to, I think, try to get done by 8:30 since this is our two nights in a row. I feel I am a little flagging. Um, let's try to get to the rest.
I think we've talked about one, two and three, correct?
Yes.
So four, five and six? And then if I can have like five minutes at the end to just kind of talk about our July 8th meeting.
Okay. I was looking at number four and saying, what would I not defer to HDR to answer?
I think that was more of a question, what is the future of Santa Fe and its relationship to the river?
Yes, yes. There's a lot of discussion about that last night.
Yeah, I mean, is, do we want Santa Fe to become an expressway? Do we want Santa Fe to be a way that people can get to this gateway to the river? This iconic experience of the river down here? How, how do they work together?
Frontage roads perhaps?
Which in 1985 was the plan.
Yeah. And those stops along Santa Fe were frustrating. They're dangerous. I mean, it's just really dangerous.
I mean, HDR actually, their transportation, they had so far. There was one map that showed all the accidents and it was just an insane amount of accidents along Santa Fe.
Well, as we talked about, I'll, I'll give my two cents, fifteen cents. As we talked about Littleton Boulevard, there's a whole bunch of little pieces of Santa Fe that are different situations. One of our questions at the tables last night was the very top of the city where we have the, the red commercial. It's just, it seems like us, it just is what it is. It's, it's, there's the properties that are, let me point you out a map you're not looking at. Um, you know, this property that's between the tracks and Santa Fe, very busy roadway, uh, you know, just what, you know, what can develop there of any significant size or quality level and just kind of what's in this area today anyway, as far as self-storage and just mix of uses. You know, you've got Lowe's on this side, but interesting how they oriented away from Santa Fe, just the reality of the, the situation there. But it's just a, it's an interesting pocket of Littleton that, um, we're kind of looking at it as it is what it is. It's why we didn't include it in some of the other designations. But to me, that, that absolutely ties into kind of that future of retail question. Or it's one of those areas that, you know, we have areas in other cities that are kind of your metal building area, frankly. It's where your kind of small business, odds and ends types of activities go on and it, sometimes they convert it to those art areas over time when those buildings go out of use and so, but it, it just seems like, uh, it, that's a whole nother part of Santa Fe versus some of the other stretches. The stretch through downtown, I mean, I, I don't know how much this is being discussed on the TMP side, but just the, the Bowles intersection, I mean, that just drives us crazy as visitors.
Yeah, what do you do with that? It's, that's, that's much harder than, than mineral in Santa Fe.
Yeah.
A factor of three.
True.
Not to mention trying to walk across it. So, so that's, that micro area right there is just another situation along Santa Fe and absolutely just that long-held desire to connect downtown and the river. Then there's the stretch, uh, you know, Rappo College on one side and then some land that just seems like it would, uh, sorry, I'm looking at the map, talking to myself. This stretch along here, as Mark brought up in one of the sessions last night, right now, we have it in core to mixed use. So that's where, um, Platte River, um.
Platte River first, yeah.
But, you know, Hudson Gardens popping up here, but, so it's a stretch between Hudson Gardens and Dish. So Mark's point was, why not include that in the urban downtown transition? Works for me, but, but kind of that, that curve, part of the football around downtown, that's just a, a situation there. Then some of the, the open space and green in the river, you spot again, when, you know, you've gotten a glimpse of it up here along Santa Fe. And then, once you're down here, past Hudson Gardens, you just get little glimpses if there's a trailhead or, you know, Seminary is an interesting use along there. I mean, it's a, but it's an openness, you see the mountains, so it's just a interesting mix of uses along here. And, um, we certainly had, um, in one of our discussions with some of the river stakeholders, you know, we've got our old mobile home parks there that is absolutely serving a need today. But, um, so there's just a variety of things going along. I guess the ultimate question was partly access to the river. Um, I think we've dug up those previous plans that, you know, it just.
Called for frontage.
Or even just that, that, just see that roadway that would kind of veer off of Santa Fe and be kind of more of a parkway treatment along, uh, the, the open space there. But, um, I guess only part of that kind of happened behind Aspen Grove, even any kind of roadway parallel to Santa Fe, but, um, so I'm, I'm kind of babbling.
Yeah, but Aspen Grove does provide a good example of how not to connect to the river.
Or connect the light rail.
Or the light rail.
Connect to anything.
And then when you get down to HSR, of course, uh, we, we've had multiple meetings with some of our partners at South Suburban that are, uh, yeah, it'd be nice to have quality development there, but we don't want it wide open access to South Platte Park, it would just get overrun and that has to be managed, so.
They want a control point.
Yeah, so.
Very few of them.
It's like we want to maintain public access, but also manage it. Um, so, so that's some of the challenges along there. My thing has always been, um, if, if ultimately the only answer on Santa Fe is expressway because of just the volume of traffic that moves through here, then absolutely try and get more activity to orient toward the river, um, that Santa Fe is more of the back door. If that's not where you get your access to your properties and.
Well, here's the, the danger is, you know, you've got four lanes in each direction, the roar of traffic doubles, uh, we're cut off from the lifeblood of, of lifeblood of Littleton, which was the river, um, the grain mill there, et cetera, et cetera. We split Little, the western half of Littleton is separated almost. Uh, it, it, there's some, you know, there's great opportunities, especially as you go south with a bigger piece of the property, but there's also incredible possibility, a lot of danger possibilities.
So I think, I guess a short answer to this question, what I see the comp plan saying in some form or fashion is, this is a spine of our community, river plus roadway, and there's a lot of other people that pass through here every other day, every day, but, um, for that idea of trying to influence where the, the studies go that will shape the future of the roadway, um, that, that's people that study and ultimately design what happens with this roadway have to be sensitive, that it passes right by our downtown, it parallels this incredible greenway and river asset. We have our educational resource with the Rappo Community Council. There's just so much going on along this corridor that's of value to this community. But yes, there's, you've got all this passing traffic that's not going anywhere. It's only going to be added to with what's happening south of here, so. It's very hard to serve both functions, to move a bunch of traffic and be friendly to frontage properties. I see a big dig. Big dig.
Big dig.
Charny. You can hear it, custom length extension.
Well, you know, we laugh, but, but it's only, all it takes is money, but in, in selective places.
Working with the Corvett.
Charlie Ergen. Well, so as the poet Gloria, the past planning commission said, which changed my mind about the river here, neighbor, uh, then, yes, he said, uh, "The river is our beachfront property." It changed my whole feeling about, oh, yeah, okay, hey, how about oriented, orienting development towards the river? Don't block it off with houses or high rises and fences.
And big highways.
Big, yeah.
Road, roads.
Yeah, roads, uh, or there's our disposal facility or something that, you know, it's our prize and how do we take advantage of that?
I mean, even, I, I think, you know, we always hear people speak very positively about Breckenridge having a facility here in Littleton, but I guess there's the parts in the back that, uh, restaurant things, but it's kind of oriented towards Santa Fe. that, restaurant things, but it's kind of oriented towards Santa Fe.
It does both.
And that's for visibility, but is that what's going to change over time? There's not really an advantage to having uses up near this roadway, because.
Well, if you've got Zippo access, then what does that do? Of course, you go north, what does that do with the small businesses there?
Right.
And you have to have, what do you, you get cut off, what do you do? It's a, like I say, it's ripe with opportunity and danger here, it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of discussion.
But, yeah, I've said before, I mean, it's already access-controlled in the good stretches of it. I mean, next level up in other parts of the country is, access absolutely gets controlled and it's not a full freeway, but it sure acts like one in some.
And it's interesting though, because you mentioned Breckenridge, but you've got Angelo's there, which has done, I think, a very nice job. And the combination of the two along with designs by Sundown, they built a, I think, a very credible business space, but the same access road that runs into Reynolds Landing, which has direct access into the, into the park. And, and if you're sitting at Angelo's, you're sitting at Breckenridge, you can see the park and it's been a while since I've been, been over there, I'm not sure, I know there's a sign that says Reynolds Landing off, in one direction, right off Brewery Lane there, and it's not, maybe it's not under ideal laboratory conditions, the perfect model, but it's not a terrible model either.
And it's not done yet.
Yeah. Yeah, they're still doing, they're still working on it.
Right, and we're pursuing grants to expand what Reynolds Landing is to better connect, and honestly, for Breck and Angelo to have that frontage onto the river.
I mean, I just was there for lunch. We went to Breckenridge and then we went over to Reynolds Landing and took a walk up Hudson Gardens and it's, it's, it's just a natural combination to add those two together there, because you know, you eat that big lunch, you really need to walk.
But, you know, we've been working here now since.
Easy beverages.
Spring of last year and we're still passing Angelo's by, because we don't, you don't remember where that stupid street is to turn into.
It's a little more awkward to get to Angelo's and to.
Plus, we had our representative, Aspen Grove, moaning about how they don't have a real sign out front, and yeah, I really have to pay attention to when we're getting close to the Aspen Grove entrance, because you don't get a lot of warning that you're approaching it. So I think, you know, on the, on the Santa Fe question, to me, the south part, south of Rappahoe College is access. I mean, that's, that's the big issue, frontage, use and access, and then further north, it's just sensitivity to what's around it.
And once again, you have to treat it in, you know, almost four parts, like, like I was saying, Littleton Boulevard, you've got the south end, you've got the Inter Park, you've got, then you've got the Hudson Gardens and that kind of area, the seminary, and then up north, you've got the little PUE piece of the property, closes downtown, right on the river.
We haven't even talked about, you know, some of the concepts for how you reconfigure the parole intersection, just to try and make that work better, but how, what that could mean for the corners.
Actually, you did. There were unlimited money.
If there were unlimited money, yes.
Yeah, give us, give us a limited budget.
Base approach.
Okay. Well, it's, we could talk for three hours on Santa Fe, but let's move on.
And there will be an opportunity to do that.
Yes.
After the comp plan. So five, how do we achieve inclusivity while addressing affordability issues?
So I can speak to it first from the zoning standpoint, you know, there's all your typical tools for requiring a certain number of units within a development to get a density bonus or, you know, you tie something to having below-market units, affordable units, but then just these approaches of allowing flexibility of housing types and housing location. So the zoning aspect. Yeah, I think it's mainly what's coming out of the housing study that's the other side of that. It's, it's what you do from a policy standpoint as a city, but it's, it's a regional issue, it's not just Littleton.
National issue.
But, you know, and I point again toward that it just seems like there's going to be some evolution, maybe not dramatic, in the next few decades, but it just seems like there's going to be evolution in a big chunk of this community that developed in a fairly low-intensity way. Or is this an oasis in the Denver area that this is a place you can go and that's, that's been preserved? I think that's a, that's what's going to play out over the next several decades through those annual reviews of the Conference of Minutes, what's happening in the community, demographics and property value-wise, plus all those megatrends of what's happening in the housing industry and retail. It's always going to be.
The adrenaline rush for everyone.
I just, I have a hard time answering five without my background's economics, that, you know, you're messing with the market at some point.
Yes.
Because it's, gentrification is, is what it is. I mean, when you raise the value of development or redevelopment.
Yeah, we, we make Littleton Boulevard cool, all of a sudden, guess what? Property values go up all the way around.
You're either subsidizing people to help them afford an area that's become more expensive or you're doing something to hold down the price. You're messing with the market, either the demand side or the supply side, so I don't know how else to answer that question. There's, you know, there's social policy questions there, but not from a physical planning standpoint and a market standpoint.
I think one of the things that, and I don't know what interaction we've had through this process with them, but maybe there should be an opportunity to partner or work with South Metro Housing Options as part of the concept, because they're going to be attuned to a lot of those kinds of issues and could certainly have input into the policy side of the concept.
Yeah, their biggest comment, when we've talked to them, is in the northeast Littleton area where there's the older apartment buildings.
Right, they've renovated, they've spent a lot of money to renovate several of those.
But one of the constraints for them and for private ownership is height limits, that you can only do so much with those sites. So the thing I wanted to add on that item, well, the train just left the station. Lost my thought, but.
Some communities are actually turning to historic preservation to prevent gentrification.
And the tax credit aspect or?
Taxes, credit, as well as kind of building form and not being able to scrape and build up the density.
Ah, the train came back. When, when we were presenting some of the existing city data points and things, one of our observations was that Littleton has 46% of its current housing stock in attached forms, and apparently however we said that came across as, so you're good. We were like, no, that's a, that's a great foundation to build on, because we work with so many communities that, there's 5% that's anything but single-family detached homes, so there's just a, I think people, some people perceive Littleton as this suburbia of single-family detached homes. There are, there's all kinds of variety of attached housing in this community and to keep building on that and not lose it, that's one of the points of this residential mix designation up in North Littleton. So that's the other part of inclusivity is that it's not the same as the, what we were saying about don't lose your non-residential footprint, but just be aware that you've got a great foundation of housing variety that other communities, there's just that whole discussion in the planning community about missing middle housing. You've got a chunk of it, there, there's, there's other forms that aren't here, but don't lose that. That's, so that's the other part of inclusivity, but that was Councilmember Cole's point last night, is even with what you have, how do you maintain and even make it better and not drive people out? So that's, it's a challenge. Silver bullet. Can we get to number six?
Last one.
Yes.
That one, yeah, we could spend two hours there. I always like to jot down ideas, you know, three-page dissertations. Be interesting, you know, how about some homework here? Why don't, you know, put on your future, what are your Karnak hat and what, what does, what does the future of downtown look like in downtown Littleton in 20, 30 years? And send it to staff and it's, it's really interesting to sit down and think that into the future.
But I would love, I think we can even start with that discussion on, on the eighth, because I think a lot of people have very differing opinions of what downtown is.
It'll be, it'll be an ADU discussion.
Is it historic? Are we historic life? Are we, you know, allow organic development to happen in downtown? You know, prescriptive economy.
And I think one of the intriguing sort of companion pieces to that was the analogy that Gary used early on in the vision, it would be, I feel like this matches your Karnak, Rip Van Winkle, remember that guy? So the idea that if you fell asleep and woke up 20 years later, would you know where you were?
It will.
And so, you know, like, I think both of those pieces of it are important.
So everybody write down the Rip Van Winkle, wake up after 20 years.
Right. I mean, I've had that experience of not being somewhere for 20 years and being able to completely know where I am and how to navigate, even though there's been substantial change. There's still things that ground to me.
Your groceries are leaving, or by drones.
Well, then, yes, the drone situation could, don't look up. Like droopy eyes.
And your pizza.
So I did want to mention on the, the final item, the Littleton-style TOD with, in the downtown context, you know, we're, as we were grabbing lunch downtown today, we were saying, how much more ridership would there be from that station if there were more parking? But it's how do you do that parking? Not more surface parking, but get them to accommodate more people there, and then they'd be there for other reasons, on the weekend and in the evenings.
It's, you charge a nominal sum during the day, at night, it's open to the public. That'll solve some parking problems. Not that there's huge parking problems downtown, I'd say, anybody in the know in Littleton can, you know, knows where to park. And I always say that, you know, people will walk a half mile if they're in a Christmas time at the mall, they'll walk a half a mile to the front door, but they can't walk, they complain about three blocks parking and having, and walking to our main street.
I just want to clarify too, you, you mean, what will it look like in 20 years in terms of physical form, but also maybe design appearance or?
Yes, yes. Pick and choose.
Good. I wonder with downtown, at what point do you look at it as sort of a district? I mean, we have the historic district, but as a business, parking, place-making sort of district that.
Business improvement district?
Residents of that area contribute to infill parking, parking structure, solutions that are specific to that area. That's something that would come out of the comp.
We could provide policy and direction for that to happen, but it, at this point in time, we can't dig that deep to have all those, but lots of things pointing to district, public-private partnerships, residential-commercial partnerships, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I think, you know, adding that to that circulation and downtown level of study, I think any and all conditions that we can make at that policy level, help us craft that continued conversation of getting deeper.
I know it came up when we were doing the downtown area plan, the idea of making Main Street two-way, you know, that would be a big change.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not a good one.
No. It's a big one.
Yeah.
As part of that circulation conversation, how does that look? So, so we'll, we'll add this last question to our agenda for the eighth. So what you received in, in paper form, I think most of you, this, is actually what will be in your packet at the end of next week, we'll discuss on July 8th. So I would actually propose, and we can talk to Tyler about this, but for us to push the tables together, so we can really get hands-on again, have the maps out, the transportation map, as well as future land use map, and really write on it and, and dig in a little bit more on the 8th of July, if you guys are up for that.
Yeah, I think the closer we go together, the more interaction we have.
I agree. I agree. And so, I just have to, I just have to work with, with Tyler on how, how it all works. Yes, exactly. I know, I feel very important. So.
Is that the study session again? No, no official.
I can tell you, right now, we do have a resubmitting for the proposed residential development on the Norgren property, so they need to just resubmit.
Norgren.
So they just resubmitted on that and we're hoping that we'll be able to bring them up for you by probably your second meeting in August, possibly September, but that will be your first public hearing.
You said September?
Either the second meeting in August or the first one in September. So July, we get to focus on this.
We had a P, we had a P4 meeting with the Norgren, right? Wasn't that a P4?
Yes. And we think you guys did a joint P4, right?
Yeah.
With, with council.
Was it joint?
No, it wasn't joint, but we did.
It was just, yeah, it was just us.
Just you, okay.
They have theirs on another night, they're, they're regular Tuesday nights together.
Okay. Okay. That was actually a question we were discussing, if we have more P4 applications, would you bring your thoughts if we did that to the city council? Just shortens the process for.
Keep it a show, see what happens.
That's interesting, okay.
If it doesn't work.
Yeah, go back to where it was.
See what happens.
All right. Anything else?
And just, you know, from the.
You had something to say, sorry.
From an Envision standpoint, so we'll meet again on July 8th, and then your next joint leadership session will be August 13th, and that's when that packet will include the drafts of both plans.
And you're, this, writing it as we speak, you better be getting, getting close.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's still in your head.
We're all feeling very confident.
It's going to be a.
I'll be the spokesperson. So, but just to kind of give you that sense, from the community engagement standpoint, much as your staff communication said, we're about halfway through a lot of the summer events, but we have the biggest concentration in July and August and some of the larger events. All of the events are listed on the website, envisionlittleton.org, so, but the bigger ones include a street fair that'll be in conjunction with the Criterion, a telephone town hall at the end of August that'll focus specifically on those drafts, and the public comment period is also listed on, on the calendar, so beginning August 14th and ending September 16th. And so, but if you, if you want to look, take a look through that, or if you get questions about that, just know that that website, we are maintaining it to the point that everything is up to date. So all of the materials that you had last night, including the new handout, all of the character types described, all of that is there as a resource for anyone. So first, first place you may want to go, if you have questions or if someone asks, say, check out envisionlittleton.org or let me help you navigate through that, so. The other big event coming up in September will be the final of our four-part speaker series, and we've talked about that, but it's the author, Peter Kajiyama, For the Love of Cities, so we're going to combine that with a showcase of the Santa Fe River border. So we're going to combine that with a showcase of the Santa Fe River corridor, bring back some of that history, and also kind of blend in some of the conversations we've had with stakeholders relative to the comprehensive and transportation master plans. I think it'll be a wonderful evening. We're, we're hoping to attract hundreds of people, and we're working with a number of partners to do that. We're in the summit room at the, on Arapaho Community College's campus. If you have partners that you would like me to reach out to, if you have friends that you would like to bring, even if they don't live in Littleton, I think it's going to be a really fantastic evening, and, you know, we'll really focus that on, not for the love of cities, but in fact, for the love of Littleton. And Peter's work is very keenly aligned with that idea of co-creating the city, you know, how you collaborate. So Thursday, September 12th, and it'll be an evening event.
We're going to get signed copies of his book.
You know, that is always part of when you bring a speaker, right? Like, they come with a card in tow, right? So let me see how my budget works out. You want a signed copy, I hear you. But I think you have to, to print it ahead of time so we can read it. So, but just, just to kind of give you a sense of, of those things that are coming along, because it'll feel like tomorrow, pretty soon here.
Put it out frequently.
Yeah.
You know, update, you know, I'd say bi-weekly, you know, events stretched out a few months, send it to us, if you don't mind.
And I, I think that you've been getting those pretty regular updates, you know, the more picture, picture oriented. I mean, we're, we're kind of combining those with the milestones, right? So when, when we have something to communicate, we're doing that, so.
Because I, you know, all of us, I'm, I'm looking at that calendar and going, hey, it ain't too long until October here.
Yeah.
Yes. Somebody else is looking at the calendar. Okay. Okay, any other comments? Seeing no, uh-oh. We are adjourned. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.